It is couple of minutes after seven o'clock, we will reconvene in open session. This regular meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. We have a full house tonight, welcome. We cannot tell you how much we appreciate your interest in the Waco Public Schools and your support for all the things, great things happening in this district and in this community. And as I remind you every month, I want to again remind you, the Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or to solve problems of individuals, as management is the sole responsibility of our esteemed Superintendent and his staff. Lastly, if you have a cellphone or other electronic device, which we got such a big crowd, if you would put that on silent, at the very least, we would greatly appreciate it. And at this time, we'd ask that you join us for a moment of silence as we pause for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Thank you. Move on to Item 6, Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Nelson. Do we know who we have?
Yes, we have Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Look at that.
Tonight, we're pleased to have two students from Tennyson Middle School to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Both students are rising eighth graders. Please welcome Gabriel Fields and Shania Green. Lisa Hall's the principal at Tennyson Middle School. She's accompanying the students this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, students. And Board members, please gather in front of the dais for tonight's special recognitions. And we will begin that awards portion of our meeting with a reintroduction of our pledge leaders, who have both just completed the seventh grade at Tennyson Middle School. Shania Green says her favorite subject in school is math. In her spare time, she loves playing volleyball, basketball, softball, and running track. She also enjoys being with friends and family and swimming. Now, her principal, Ms. Hall, says Shania is a sweet-natured young lady who values her education, and she always has a smile on her face and gratitude in her heart. And when Shania grows up, she wants to be a teacher. Bless her. Now, Shania's mother, Victoria Green, is here. Her father, Gary Green, was not able to join us, but Victoria, would you stand, please? Very good. Thank you for raising such a wonderful daughter. We're proud to have her at Tennyson. Gabriel Fields also says his favorite subject in school is math. He enjoys attending Bible study, Builders Club, Gamers Club, and participating with the Civic Theater. Gabriel not only attends Bible study, but he also enjoys teaching one as well, along with volunteering at his church and riding bikes with his family. His principal, Ms. Hall, says Gabe's an outstanding young man, who's a model student with impeccable manners, also makes some awesome banana bread. When he grows up, Gabriel wants to be a veterinarian. Now, Gabe's mother, Amanda Fields, and Father Philip Fields are both with us here. Could you please stand so we can recognize you as well? Thanks for raising such a fine young man and letting us have that time each day with him, okay? We also want to say thank you to our adopted school partners, Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, for donating the books and the gift cards that our pledge leaders are receiving tonight. Gabe and Shania, thank you so much for joining us and leading us on the pledge. And Ms. Hall, thank you for bringing two of your fine students. Well, colleges and universities value students who take the most challenging courses available at their school. And at Waco ISD, our students have the opportunity to stand out in college admissions, earn college credits, skip introductory classes, and build college skills by taking advanced placement courses. AP courses on a student's transcript show colleges they are intellectually curious, unafraid of hard work, and capable of learning the knowledge and the skills expected of college students. And with the AP Scholar Awards, the AP programs recognizing high school students who've demonstrated outstanding college-level achievement through their performance on AP exams. And the students who are being recognized this evening, their combination of rising juniors, seniors, and recent graduates, have received national recognition as either an AP Scholar, an AP Scholar with Honor, or AP Scholar with Distinction. An AP Scholar is given to a student who scores a three or higher on three AP tests. An AP Scholar with Honor is given to students who receive a score of three or higher on four or more AP tests, with an average score of 3.25 on all of them. And an AP Scholar with Distinction is given to a student who's received a score of three or higher on five or more AP tests, with an average score of 3.5. Now, keep in mind, in 2015, Waco ISD had 15 AP Scholars and Scholars with Honor. Last year, Waco ISD had 15 AP Scholars, Scholars with Honor, and Scholars with Distinction. This year, Waco ISD had 23 AP Scholars, Scholars with Honor, and Scholars with Distinction. Now, we're going to ask you to hold your applause for the entire group until the end as we recognize these students for their hard work and achievement. First off, Christian Allen, an AP Scholar with Honor, graduated third in her class at Waco High this year. She's the daughter of Darlena Smith, and she will attend the University of Texas at Austin. Next up, Haley Miller, an AP Scholar with Distinction, the valedictorian of the Waco High Class of 2017. She's the daughter of Trey and Paula Miller. She'll be attending Texas A&amp;M's acclaimed May's Business School. Fallon Bain, another scholar, was not able to join us tonight, but next up, Dylan Rivera, an AP Scholar with Distinction, a rising senior at Waco High, the son of Sabas and Gloria Rivera. His GPA currently is 107.7 points. Next up, Andrew Araho, an AP Scholar with Honor, a rising senior at University High, the son of Marissa Espinoza and John Barron. He currently holds a 104.3 GPA. And Brian Lopez is next, an AP Scholar, graduated 19th in the 2017 class at Waco High, the son of Juan and Sylvia Lopez. He will attend the University of Virginia. Now, we're going to introduce you to Hannah Sriram, an AP Scholar, graduated fifth in her 2017 class at Waco High, the daughter of Raze and Diane Sriram, going to McLennan Community College. And she'll be going to MCC as part of their distinctive Presidential Scholar Program. That's a great program. And now, we're going to keep it in the family. Sarah Sriram, the sister of the previous one, AP Scholar as well, rising star at Waco High, the daughter of Raze and Diane Sriram, currently holds a 107.7 GPA. They're way past 100 points. Our next scholar, Evan Davis, an AP Scholar, rising senior at University High, the son of George Davis. His GPA is 103.5. And next up, Alexis Cervantes, an AP Scholar, rising senior at University High. She's a Trojan, daughter of Pete and Yolanda Cervantes, and she currently has a GPA of 106 points. Mom, that's okay, you can do that. Anesia Rana Ortiz, an AP Scholar, rising senior at University High. She's the daughter of Angela Ortiz and Emile Carrera, currently has a GPA of 102.3. And next, Andrea Suarez, an AP Scholar, a rising senior at University High, the daughter of Felipe and Maria Suarez. Her GPA is also over 100. Enrique Perez was not able to join us, one of our AP Scholars, but next up, Jasmine Betters, an AP Scholar, salutatorian of the 2017 class at University High, the daughter of Rosalyn Shelton, and she will be attending the University of Houston. Anna Stewart was not able to attend this evening. Next up, Tanzi Ackerman, an AP Scholar, a rising senior at Waco High, the daughter of Judge Sanders. She currently has a GPA, get this, 108.2. Next up, Bebek Bandari, an AP Scholar, graduated 16th in his 2017 class at University High, is the son of Basurum and Manju Bandari. He will be attending Texas A&amp;M. Our next AP Scholar, Leslie Casares, the rising junior at University High, the daughter of Norman Beltran and Julio Casares. She has a GPA of 93.5. She's a rising junior for the Trojans. Next up, Manuel Gibson, an AP Scholar, a rising senior at University High, the son of Emmanuel and Sandra Gibson. He has a GPA of over 93 points. Aiden Medina is not here with us this evening, but Josue Morales is, a Waco High AP Scholar, the son of Juan and Sylvia Morales, has a GPA of 103.9. And then Luis Picazo, an AP Scholar, graduated 17th in his class at University High, the son of Felipe Picazo and Marisala Amoraz, from Texas A&amp;M is where he's going. And then, not able to be with us tonight, Samuel Ortega Rangel. So how about a round of applause for all these fantastic students? Moms and dads, now you can whoop it up. There you go. Tonight, we'd also like to recognize Dr. Scott McClanahan, the District's Director of Advanced Academics, who works tirelessly to ensure opportunities like AP are available for our students. And we'd be remiss if we didn't give parents or family members of all these students we introduced to please stand so we can recognize you tonight as well. Congratulations, Dr. McClanahan, and also, parents, thank you so much for all you do to help Waco ISD. All 23 of these scholars excel because of their hard work and dedication. Waco ISD is proud of you. All right, the United States Army Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps, or shorten that to JROTC, as most of us know it, teaches students' character, education, student achievement, wellness, leadership, and diversity in an effort to produce successful students and citizens. And it's safe to say that our next honoree has indeed learned those valuable skills. On April 22 of this year, Cadet Ismael Lopez of University High School, along with UHS Battalion Commander, Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Alexandria Monroe, and other junior ROTC cadets, were stationed as volunteers at the Michael Johnson Invitational Track and Field Competition at Baylor University. Now, Cadets Lopez and Monroe were working the hammer throw event when Monroe began reading a work-related text she got from another cadet. And at that same moment, an athlete released the hammer, and it was headed straight to where Cadets Lopez and Monroe were standing. Track officials yelled for them to take cover. Risking his own safety, Cadet Lopez quickly pulled Monroe out of harm's way, preventing serious bodily injury or possibly death. Now, his actions were witnessed by officials at the event, who praised him for his quick thinking. And stay up here with us, Ismael, that's okay. And since the incident, UHS Senior Army Instructor, First Sergeant Leonard Monalongo, retired, nominated Cadet Lopez for the Junior ROTC Medal of Heroism. And that's the highest honor a member of the program can earn in all of the Junior ROTC. In addition, the Heart of Texas Military Officers Association of America and the Good Soldier Foundation presented the Spirit of America Award to Cadet Lopez at a ceremony at Ridgewood Country Club. And recently, State Representative Doc Anderson presented Cadet Lopez with a resolution honoring him for his courage and his composure, and congratulating him for his nomination for the Heroism Award. As Sergeant Monalongo wrote, Cadet Lopez's actions reflect great credit upon himself, his family, and the Trojan Battalion. Now, at this time, we'd also like to recognize Senior Army Instructor, First Sergeant Leonard Monalongo, retired, for his continued steadfast dedication to the cadets of University High School and their program, and his impact on Waco ISD. Round of applause for Cadet Ismael Lopez and Sergeant Monalongo. Thank you for your service. Cadet Lopez's family is also here this evening, his mother Sylvia Lopez, his dad Juan Lopez, his brother, who is an AP Scholar, Brian Lopez. If you would stand so you can be recognized as well. Thank you for raising two outstanding young men. And thank you for your service, gentlemen. Cadet Lopez will begin his fourth year as a cadet at University High. He got promoted. He's the newly-appointed Battalion Commander for the upcoming school year. He's exhibited true bravery and leadership. Waco ISD is incredibly proud of the example you set, young man. Let's turn to athletics now. Maybe summer break for the majority of our students, but a group of Waco ISD athletes are making their hard work pay off in a big way. The Lake Air 12-and-under Major Girl Softball Team, which includes seven Waco ISD students, recently swept a doubleheader in the Texas West State Tournament in Abilene. They had to win two games in one day to win that tournament, and they did it in hot temperatures, 21 to 5, and then 8 to 4 in a do-or-die situation. That sent them to the regionals. And guess where that's happening? Right here in Waco. That clutch performance got them in the regionals here. Their first game was this afternoon at the George W. Bush Little League Complex, and that team is still hot. They scored 10 runs in the first inning, and then blew past New Mexico 12 to nothing. Seven of the athletes on that Lake Air Little League team, as we said, are Waco ISD students. We would like to recognize them this evening. Zaya Flores from Indian Spring Middle School. Daniela Ramirez from Tennyson Middle School. She pitched a two-hitter today. Vanessa Ramirez from Tennyson Middle School. Alyssa Rivas from Tennyson Middle School. Ashara Thibodeau from GW Carver. Michaela Ramos from Lake Air Montessori. And Dominique Rodriguez, also from Lake Air Montessori. So seven of the 13 players on the roster are Waco ISD products. But wait, there's more. The assistant coach, Angelo Ramirez, is a graduate of University High School. And the head coach, David Rodriguez, is a graduate of Waco High School. So we've got Waco High and University High producing this great team. And before we let the girls sit down, it's my understanding, girls, you have a special award for Superintendent Dr. Marcus Nelson. It's an autographed game ball from the regional game today, their first victory. Very good. Thank you, ladies. Dr. Nelson was at that game for a couple innings today. It was only, what, 100 degrees? Long sleeves, a tie. Did what it takes. He's a fan. So, and congratulations, ladies. If you're a parent of one of these outstanding athletes, please stand so we can recognize you as well. Now, these young ladies play again tomorrow at 2:00 against Arkansas. Let's root them on to another tournament win, and then two more after that for a trip to the World Series. That'd be fantastic. Congratulations, ladies. Good luck in your next game. You indeed have made Waco ISD, in fact, the entire city of Waco, proud for your accomplishments on the field. Way to go. And one last recognition this evening. Waco ISD has worked diligently to create new engaging opportunities for students to not only get an outstanding education, but at the same time, be workforce-ready upon graduation. And the Greater Waco Advanced Academies create a challenging learning environment that encourages high expectations for student success in the working fields of healthcare, and manufacturing, and soon, construction sciences. It's exciting and validating when our efforts are recognized and celebrated by others, and that happened earlier this month, when the Career and Technical Association of Texas awarded Waco ISD and the Greater Waco Advanced Academies the CTE Showcase of Excellence Award. At state-level awards given for any district or program that represents best practices and excellence in CTE through community partnerships, sustained excellence, innovation, transferability, cost-effectiveness, student impact, and/or membership and activities. Now, Donna McKethen, our Director of CTE for Waco ISD, accepted the award July 18 in Irving. Please join me in congratulating Ms. McKethen, our CTE Department, and the staff and students of Guam and Guaca for their hard work and dedication, and the recognition and honor that they reserved, received. We also know our success would not be possible without the generous support of local individuals and businesses and organizations, who have seen the value and potential in these programs and have been an integral part of their success. We'd like to thank them as well at this time, and we look forward to seeing these programs grow, especially with the addition of the new Construction Sciences Program that begins this fall. That concludes our special recognition for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Geets, and we'll move on to Item 8. Audience for guests, did anyone sign up tonight, Sandra? All right. Before going to the consent agenda, we do have one item I'd like to take out of order, which would be discussion of possible action on the hiring of administrators. Is there any objection to taking that out of order? All right, then we'll jump down to Item 10A. Ms. Potell.
Thank you, President Atkins, Dr. Nelson, members of the Board. Administration would like to recommend Lena Ortiz for the position of Assistant Principal at Caesar Chavez Middle School. Ms. Ortiz is right here, and I'm going to go ahead and read her bio. Lena Ortiz has been in education for nine years. She taught fifth grade, and most recently, she has served as an instructional specialist at Kendrick Elementary. She is currently in a master's program at Charlton State University for her education administration, and she has a bachelor's degree from University of Mary Harden, Baylor. She is certified in her principal certification, she does have that, general S4 through 8, and ESL 4 through 8. In her leisure time, Ms. Ortiz enjoys spending time with her husband Greg, daughter Elena. She also enjoys spending time with her extended family and friends, going to the gym and reading.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion on the Administration's recommendation.
I'll move.
Thank you, Ms. Betts, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, welcome aboard, man. Do you want to introduce the family you have with you?
And this is my husband Greg, and this is my daughter Elena, who is a five at Waco Schools as well. We're anticipating we're going to go to Tennyson Middle School.
Fantastic. Thanks, guys, glad you're here. All right, we'll move back up to the consent agenda. I've not received any requests. Anybody want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
The Guam item.
All right, so you're going to pull Item K, right? No, that's, no, it's a...
A few questions. How's K?
No, L.
L.
No, no, no.
No, wait.
No, that's a stretch.
P.
Yeah. You're right, it is P.
P is in Prosperity.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, Mr. Dupuy, with the assist from Dr. Nelson. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda with the exception of Item P.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes, is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to give it to Ms. Cordaway. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Now, we'll take up Item P, discussion of possible action on the memorandum of understanding with respect to the academies. Mr. Dupuy?
Got it. I'm not sure who it'd be. I guess...
Donna or...
Dale? No. Cheryl? Yeah. Probably Cheryl, really. Okay, just want to make sure that I'm understanding the numbers here. You know, and I want to preface my comments on this with the statement that I'm pro-Guama. I don't want anybody, anything I say to be interpreted as being against the program. In fact, I can't conceive of the circumstances under which I would say it was a bad idea for us to continue this. So don't interpret my questions as anything negative, or leading to anything that would affect its ongoing operations. But, okay, we're currently, if we were at full capacity, 505 students, we would be spending, and I guess, direct variable cost, $39.89 per student. Of course, we're not at full capacity, so it's a little bit above that. And what, I guess, I would like, at least, are, do we communicate with our partner ISDs the fact that we're toting...
Well, maybe a spare, but...
A disproportionate amount of the load on this project?
So, Mr. Dupuy, I'm not certain how much of that has been communicated to our partner superintendents. I do understand that before she left, Dr. Kane presented a letter to the Supes explaining that we were raising the rates, and I don't know the extent to which that was explained to them. My understanding was that there were no questions or concerns about raising the rates.
Okay. You're talking about the increment for the building fee this year?
Yes, yes.
So they really didn't, nobody took issue with, or there's not, I guess, on their part, a lot of...
What's been reported to us is that no one took issue with the increase.
Okay, okay.
And I did talk to Michael Hope at Robinson myself, when I was trying to kind of see what maybe had been sent out, and he did not seem to have any issues with the increase when I discussed it with him.
Okay. Do they, I wonder how they, I mean, there's still, even if we were operating under our most efficient, or at full capacity, what we're currently charging is still, what, $2,900 plus $3,500? Well, still about $489 below...
And that's based on current staffing. So it could be that if we did increase additional students, I mean, because that's my capacity based on the number of staff we have currently, that that's what we would need to be at. But I don't know what the possibility would be for additional students with additional staff as well. I'm not sure what the building capacity issues might be. I'm not sure what the building capacity issues might be.
Okay, okay. Well, again, I think the community overall, including the surrounding school districts, really does value and is enthusiastic about the program. I guess I would just sort of like for them to possibly consider participating in a more material way than what we're asking them to do right now.
And I think we would intend to have a routine... You know, relook at this every spring from this point on and have that discussion with the superintendents, because I think, for the most part, in the calculations that I did, I think they may be making money on this from what they get for their CTE funds, so...
Who is... The other districts are?
The partner ISDs?
In certain districts. I mean, based on what we receive in our basic allotment, so I would think that they wouldn't have a lot of heartburn maybe increasing it a little bit each year.
Would you, at some point, vary it by district? Where the ones that... It's basically, they're assigned WADA, right? That dictates what their funding is.
What their basic allotment is.
For an individual student, there's a multiplier of that because it's CTE.
We could look at something like that.
I think that the important thing is that we look at a couple of options, and I believe if we communicate with our partners about, you know, what our need is and what the projected need will be, they... Everyone seems on board. And so, it just appears to be a good time to engage in honest conversation now that the grant is gone and the funding is more... We have a clearer picture four, five years into the program of what to expect. It's just time to revisit that and see.
And frankly, I've done this with them for the past 10 or 12 years with the Challenge Academy, and we've had some really, you know, significant increases some years. And I think that their receptiveness, when they know that you're running an efficient economical program and you're keeping the costs down as you can, they have been willing to make those increases.
The one thing that you need... Carrie, I'm sorry. Were you through?
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I mean, we do need to demonstrate some sort of added value. I mean, there's gotta be a value add to the money they're investing with us. In other words, just as a program, when we all pool our resources together, we can offer on a scale and with some of the unique offerings that no one district could do on its own. I would balance that against, you know, if it's a program we're all committed to doing, regardless of the number of students, there are certain set costs we're gonna have to fund every year, and the students we bring in are actually a benefit to us if they offset that. And so, I know we talked last week about running some calculations in terms of what we're projected to bring in from outside districts and what our costs are. I mean, I think part of that calculation should also be kind of what are the set costs? You know, in a classroom, whether you have 15 students or 22 students, the teacher cost's the same, correct? There are certain set fixed costs that, whether we have 500 students or 300 students, those costs are gonna be the same. And then look at how much we're getting applied towards that from bringing in these other... Well, I'm saying, there's a certain amount of supply and demand here. And although we don't want to be in a position where we're taking money away from other programming, the truth is, we don't make money on our math department or our English department either. I mean, the money that comes in, we provide service to the students. We provide services to the community by educating these young people. We need to make sure that what we're getting is going a long way towards helping us address these fixed costs, but it's never gonna be a moneymaker for us, and we don't need to think it is. And we need to look at it in terms of make sure we don't price ourselves out of the market, that the value add to these other districts is in line with what we're asking them to pay. That's all I would say. President?
Ms. Pedditt.
Yes, what is the student projection for this year?
460 students is the projection for this year.
And they all done signed up and so forth?
Those are students that are in their high schools' master schedules. And so, they've been signed up. Their counselors have scheduled them, and it's a matter of putting those students on the bus. And so, well, I say 460 because the number that Dr. McCall gave me today was slightly higher, and he's looking at 460 being that harder number.
Now, can you give me... I don't know about the rest of the board. Can you send me a list of the districts and how many students are participating?
Yes, sir. Dr. McCall provided that for me today, and we can have that... I can get that to Dr. Nelson.
Okay, thank you.
And he is working on... He gave me a draft today of a pretty thorough proposal of possible ways to increase income, projections based on where they've been. And he's cleaning that up, and hopefully, we'll have that out to the entire board in the next week.
One more quick question. At the end of the year, how many out of the students that we have... How many students actually graduate? Or how many drop off? Percentage type?
I'll have to verify.
Bring that report next month. Okay.
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I don't have all those numbers, but one that we're real proud of is that Hillcrest Hospital hired 18 of our seniors from the... Just from the Healthcare Academy. So, we're, you know, we're in year four. We'll start year four. So, we've actually, this year, last year, we added sophomores started coming, so we're actually gonna have the students longer. So, I don't have all of them, but that's just a really proud number that we have for that first year of the Healthcare Academy. The 18 students went straight to work. The other thing I would say is that Dr. McCall and Crystal Wilson have done a much better job of, I believe, projecting for this year. We had some inflated projections in the past, and I believe, much firmer. They did have done a much, much better job of making sure that this year's projections are much more solid. So, they do need to be commended for that.
Mr. President?
Dr. Nelson.
Thank you. Ms. McKethen, my question is, did I understand from some research on this that one of our neighboring districts opened a healthcare academy recently?
Yes and no. Conley High School has an early college program. And so, with that program, they have included now with MCC a program that is for their students only to go through the healthcare... Through a healthcare early college process. I'm not sure how many that will...
Twenty, 20 students.
So, that's the type of activities, I believe, as a region, we should discourage?
Yes, sir. We've had some similar conversations about early college and its effect on us. For example, there... Conley has an early college program that students might enroll in the welding at TSTC. And so, we've had conversations about being their early college provider as opposed to them going to that campus. But, you know, that's conversations that need to happen as we move forward, but ones that we... I don't know the impact of that complete... You know, I'm not real familiar with their system, but I do know that there were some students that were gonna come to the Healthcare Academy from Conley, but they have never been one of our larger participants.
You know, what we don't want is five years from now, several other districts have created manufacturing or healthcare magnets.
No, sir, we don't. But I think that comes in with your partnerships. I mean, our biggest partners are... Two of our biggest partners are McGregor and Midway. And those two schools are very pleased with what their students that they're sending to us. McGregor in particular is a small district, and it's advantageous for them to come to our programs because they could not afford the teacher nor the equipment and supplies that we have by doing it themselves. So, that was the whole foundation for it. But I know that Midway is very pleased with what they're sending. We're getting more and more students from their high school over at our school.
But to follow up on what Dr. Nelson said, we... You're right. Everybody's pleased with where we are to date. We don't want to become complacent. I mean, we need to continue to evaluate that program, make sure we're meeting the demands of local industry, and that all the partner districts are, again, seeing a value add so that we're providing programming that they recognize they can't do on their own. That the only way to be able to provide all these resources and all this intricate training and the coursework is if we all pool those resources together. And I think if we do that, there's a better chance that folks don't try to do smaller programs on their own.
Dr. McCall and Dr. McCallahan and I had a very productive meeting with TSTC in terms of increasing some of the dual credit offerings that we have there. So, that's more of that added value.
Fantastic.
Any other questions, comments? All right, I will entertain a motion for item 9P, which would be the memorandum of understanding for this coming school year. And we'll continue to have those discussions on the funding model for the next school year.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Dupuy. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordewag. Any other questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to reports and discussion. Discussion on Grant Management Department, the annual report.
We have our grant director, coordinator, manager, supervisor, Ms. Sheila Whitehead Sharp. Okay?
That's a real...
Minute or more. I apologize.
That's okay. I've been called worse.
Well, they gave you that real long title to begin with.
I know, right? Good evening, President Atkins, members of the board, Dr. Nelson. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you tonight and just share what the Grants Management Department has done, how they have served the district over the past school year. You had detailed information in your packet, in your board packet, but I also have a presentation we'll review tonight. Maybe. Thank you. What idea. Okay, we have an agenda done. I'm not gonna cover everything that was in your board packet, but I'm gonna do some highlights. Our grants. Apple Inc., our Apple Connected Grant, was originally given to us in 2014, and it is not money, but it is products and services that they're providing, one-to-one technology learning environment on four different campuses. Bells Hill, J.H. Hines, Kendrick, and Providence Heights Elementary. Over the past year, the value of the products and services that they donated was a little over $1 million. Year to... Not year to day, but over the... Since the award in 2014, it's been $6.4 million. What they do is they actually send us statements about services they've provided and the value of those services, and that's how we get that information. We have a new grant this year, 21st Century Texas After-School Centers for Education, Texas ACE. That's at GW Carver Middle School. And one of the main focuses on this after-school program is that all of the activities in the program are aligned with the school day curriculum and what they are doing during the school day. Requires a lot of documentation and that you can prove that what you're doing is actually aligned and have to identify what teach you're addressing in your activities. It also includes six weeks of summer programming. Kids took swimming lessons this year at the Y. Why is it going dark? Okay, just some pictures here. This is actually from the ACE program at Carver. They have a gardening club they participate in. They have family nights. They did some family bingo, got some prizes donated, and a summer programming. I don't know if you can tell. The reason I put this last picture in here is because I love what they're doing. It's an activity where the kids are talking about their dreams. And his says, "My dream bucket." And then he gets to put in there all the things he's dreaming about, and I love that. TIPS, another new grant. This is Cycle Five. This grant will be at Brook Avenue. Just got the NOGA Award last month. It'll be all the way through the 2020 school year. It'll bring on some additional staff, an RTI coordinator, some instructional specialists, GT bilingual, an instructional data evaluation that'll help set up reports for teachers to access information about students' performance more early, and family engagement, and an after-school. Then a couple of people to manage the grant onsite. We have two Cycle Three grants, as you know, that are in TIPS. They're at Indian Spring and J.H. Hines. The three-year grant ends Monday, but they have extended for a fourth year, and that application has been approved. The one at Indian Spring is a little under $1 million, and this whole year is to be focused on sustainability. So, they're looking at each of the aspects of the program, and they're gonna be looking at how they can sustain that after the life of the grant. One example is, there's a data evaluation specialist goes into Ediforia and creates these reports that are really easy for the teachers to figure out how their students have performed on the benchmark, and then what do they go from that? How do they, you know, adjust their instruction to meet each child's need? child's need and that person will be teaching the teachers how to do that themselves over the next year, work herself out of a job. The one at Heinz, the fourth year extension is a little over $800,000, also focusing on sustainability and an example would be some of the social and emotional behavior coaches there will be working with the teachers and teaching them how to use some of the behavior intervention techniques that they've been using over the past several years. Our Texas Support for Homeless Outreach Services, Tech Shep, second year of a three-year grant and they served over 1,000 students in the past year, still continue to represent us on the homeless coalition within our community and that's a coalition that works to see how we can better meet the needs of that particular population. Some pictures with activities that took place at Heinz, Coral Fest, local library and a visit to the wetlands. Last highlight, U.S. Department of Education IMSAP program, grant that funded the startup of Guam, final year of the grant ended over the past year, from year one to year three, there was a 71% increase in enrollment, so it showed a lot of promising growth and as you know, has continued to do so over the past year. Also, another highlight was that students participated, placed and advanced to state through the Skills USA competition and things like welding and robotics. Some of the priorities that our department has put in place for next year, much like many in our country, we have new leadership at the national level and we are looking to see how that is going to change the nature of grant funding, we don't have a lot of direction in that yet, but we will keep, keep focused on that, also, the grants that we pursue, just making sure we're in communication with leadership to make sure that whatever it is that we're reviewing and recommending is in line with what the district's priorities are and then a continued education of what is our role, how do we serve, how do we function as competitive discretionary grants within a larger educational institution. Details of the actual awards broken out in your board packet, but you can see there over the past four years and the four-year total, little over, well, 24.7 million and then the indirect cost from that. Our current staff, grants acquisition and compliance specialists, we have two of those, Alexis Davidson and Lucas Lynn. Do an amazing job. And then there's me. Can I answer any questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Manning?
A few meetings ago, we got a update on the Restorative Justice at Waco High, is that a rant or is that something that, I'm thinking that they said they was getting ready to lose some funding for that?
If it is a grant, it is not a competitive discretionary grant.
Okay.
It's not something that comes from our department.
It comes from special education, some sort of disproportion, we had to allocate 15% to my total budget, my federal budget for, for the early area reading services, we call it SEES, and so that's where that money came from.
Okay. But that's funding is in, am I correct?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. No, sorry, we are no longer disproportionate, so therefore we are not mandated to allocate the 15%, however, we are still allocating some money towards that in the means of staff so we can continue that program going. Okay?
Other questions or comments? So basically, we have a staff department of three people that over the last four years has brought in 24.78 million dollars to additional revenue to the district?
Yes, sir.
That's, that's pretty good work, folks, congratulations, appreciate your hard work.
Yes.
All right, any other questions on the Grants Department? All right, we will move on to our discussion on Lone Star Governance, tonight we're addressing goal progress measure 3.1, which is the work program passing rate for the year, there is obviously a report in the board packet, is there any other report from administration?
No, we just wanted to remind the board that it's going to be difficult, but we'd like to set up a workshop from approximately one Saturday morning to really not only dive in deep into our Lone Star Governance plans for this year, but really just have a conversation about strategic planning, board goals, district goals, superintendent goals, so that'll all be part of our governance commitments, in my opinion.
Sandra, are you going to, I guess, send a poll with available dates that the administration's proposing and?
We're liking September now.
Folks can free up a Saturday morning, again, I think the commitment is, it will be different than the all-weekend-long training, we're talking about a morning to get down here, try to knock out some of these things, but we do need to find a time, you know, part of the Lone Star Governance training is, to extent possible, we need to have all seven of us here, the whole team of eight, including the superintendent, so if you'll poll the board, we'll try to find those dates and any other questions on what we're doing in Lone Star Governance, as we said before, we've kind of been in a holding pattern till Dr. Nelson got here, but it's time to kind of go at it full bore again.
Yes, sir.
All right, anything else? I guess we're up to announcements, you want to, Mr. Geetzen is going to go first?
May I say something?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President, while Mr. Geetzen is making his way to the podium, did want to recognize my good friend, Mr. Felipe Garza from Avance, had a great meeting this week and look forward to continuing our post-secondary agenda through Advanced Academics and beyond, so I just wanted to recognize our community partner, Mr. Godiz for being here.
I had no idea you'd met with him this week and he and I had lunch earlier today and so we, we also talked about a lot of the opportunities to continue our partnership with Avance and we're glad you're here, thanks, sir. Mr. Geetzen?
Thank you, sir, congratulations in order for one of our teachers, Bells Hill Science Specialist Debbie DeGraff was named the 2018 Region 12 Elementary Educator of the Year, that is out of 76 school districts in central Texas, she's been instrumental in creating the greenhouse at that campus and other innovative projects in the science lab for kindergartners through fifth graders, she now advances to the statewide competition for Region 12 and we would have recognized her tonight, but she's off visiting her children scattered all over the country, including two in the military and one who's a law enforcement officer, so, we are four days into registration for the new school year, it's 5:00 PM today, more than 5,300 students have registered online out of our 15,000 students and that doesn't count the ones who've registered in person at campuses, new students have to do that, returning students can complete almost the entire process at wacoisd.org/register, then they only have to show proof of residency at their campus, that can save time waiting in line, but new students at Waco ISD must pick up a registration packet at their campus and if you're not sure which school you should be attending, we've got a tool on our families' portal on our website where you can input your home address, it will tell you which campus to register at and that registration goes through next Friday, August 4th, of course tomorrow is the last Friday the district's closed for our special summer schedule of four-day work weeks, in August it is back to the regular five-day work weeks, Tuesday's our district employees' health fair from noon to 3:00 PM at University High School, employees and their families, a great way to start the school year off on the right foot, and Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday of this week is our First Annual Leadership Institute, or Dr. Nelson's plan for principals and assistant principals and administrators and we're looking forward to that as well, that's three days, starting at the brick on Monday and then one of our elementary campuses the next two days. Saturday, August 12th, our annual family fest from 9:00 AM to noon at both high schools, University and Waco High, fun and games, health screenings and vaccinations and students who are enrolled in Waco ISD by that day can get a free backpack filled with school supplies that day and we'll even provide bus transportation for you, that schedule will be on our website, that's an event that you won't want to miss, a lot of fun, from 9:00 to 12:00 on August 12th and then the following week is the big week, start of school, Tuesday, August 15th at 9:00 AM, our convocation, our first one with Dr. Nelson and we'll have all our teachers and staff in one room at the convention center for an exciting kickoff to the school year, word is, Dr. Nelson has a great program in store for us, maybe with a surprise or two, and the meet the teacher nights for that week, Monday, August 14th from 4:00 to 6:00 at middle schools, same time as the next night, August 15th, that same night as convocation earlier in the day, those will be at our elementary campuses, it's an important evening for our students and staff to meet parents and start building those classroom relationships with their kids. First day of classes, Thursday, August 17th for the entire district, we're going to have a great year in Waco ISD and log on to wacoisd.org for more information as we get closer to that date, thank you trustees and Dr. Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Geetzen, why don't you stay there for a second, Bruce, Dr. Nelson?
Well, on behalf of the Board of Trustees and really all of our employees and especially our outstanding students, I just wanted to spend a minute to recognize the outstanding contribution of Mr. Bruce Geetzen to this organization over the past year, he has been a consummate gentleman, he has been a fierce champion for everything positive, he works so very closely with not only Ms. Conlon and the Tribune, but every media outlet we have, I believe, will say that he's accessible, approachable, kind and I just, in the last six weeks, I've had an opportunity to watch him in action, he knows just, you can't go to lunch with him because everybody will come up and want to speak to Mr. Geetzen from Channel 25 or whatever channel he's from and so I just, I know I speak for this board, I know I don't have to, we just wanted to thank you for your time and your effort and your service to the Waco Independent School District and we wish you well in your new endeavor at the School of Journalism at Baylor University.
Thank you, it's been an honor and a privilege to work for the district and for you guys and ladies and also Dr. Nelson, I'm excited about what you're going to do, I've got, it's a lot, big part of my heart still here at Waco ISD to, it's, education's a key and I've enjoyed the year and thank you for all your support and I'm going to continue to be a big advocate for Waco ISD, I appreciate those kind words.
Thank you, Bruce. Any other announcements, then?
Oh, one other special I made?
Absolutely.
Just wanted to acknowledge our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources who celebrated a birthday this week.
And as my present to you, I am not going to allow this board to sing happy birthday to you, you are not going to have to listen to us all sing in different keys because it would be brutal, anything else?
Happy birthday to you.
All right.
Happy birthday to you.
A solo.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday.
Dear.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
And if every member of the staff working downtown will give us your birthdays, Larry will sing to you every night for the appropriate, appropriate tip, hearing no objection, then we will stand adjourned.